I've got to take the clock for the call of change of order. Thomas, you can leave your communication.
Father God, we come to you today giving thanks for what this day and for this wonderful life that you've given each one of us. Lord, ask that you watch over this meeting tonight, let each one of us here make the best decisions that we are capable of in benefit of our community, and ask that you bless our community. If each one of us, if we travel away from here through this week, Lord, we ask that you send your gracious strength.
At this time of public request, at this time comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. In accordance with the open meeting law, council may not discuss or take any action on any item not posted on the agenda. Mr. Powers?
What are you filing with our public station? Do you want to sell it or fix it or what do you want to do?
We'll consider that and put it on the agenda for future meetings.
I just like commenting on what you've even thought about it or...
It's not on the agenda and we can't discuss it tonight, sir. Criminal report, city administrator, Scott Ethan.
Thank you all. We're getting closer to, I know some of the news now, we're gonna redo one street line and lay a new one. We're getting closer. And I'm good to go through my first set of Ethan signings, so I just may get some help. But no, we're gonna get the Ethan's for that bypass line over here coming behind the Bobby Sauce's field behind the bank and stuff. And then the one behind the apartment complex, we're close out. And before everything's said and done, I'll have, near the engineer one, I'll have all the reports that we all look at. Hopefully it'll be right at the first year we get started.
We'll move on to new business, condemn ten items which were unadmitted by any statement. Doc, so fifteen minutes, community court, police department reports.
Thank you most, sir.
Dan?
Second.
All in favor? Approve the 2002 tax roll value? Thomas makes the motion to approve. For a second?
Second.
Need discussion? All four? None yet? Okay, consider presentation of proposed permit fee schedule for environmental health activities on Grayson County Health Department. Please leave that charged, Thomas.
I'm not your proof dealer, I'm director of the health department, and you should have some materials in your packet. I do want to clarify some issues on the permit fee. As you notice, it's a graduated system, and it says 2002 and 2003. What that really should be changed to read is first year and then second year. Because restaurants renew their permits on a rotating basis. Some renew different ones every month of the year. And if the council approves the new fee, the permit schedule, then we would institute it December 1st. And consequently, as the restaurants renewed their permits between December 1st and the 20th of next year, they would be, their new permit fee would be based on what's listed as the 2002 permit fee, even though it was being, they were paying it in 2003. And then beginning December 1st of 2003 is when the second year, the second level would go into effect. So the jump wouldn't be immediate to what we've listed as 2003 fees. It would be the first year, the fee would be that first level, and then the second year, we would institute the higher fee. So it's not gonna be an immediate jump. It would be phased in over a two-year period. So I was wondering if y'all had any questions about the fee schedule.
Do you know how many establishments are in how that this would affect?
Would appeal to, how many establishments do we have in how?
That would actually pay a permanent fee this time. I could take a five right off here. I'd say we show three inspections in this last period. In that last quarter, correct.
And so they wouldn't be inspected again and wouldn't be paying their, well, we do. Most establishments are inspected twice a year, but they pay a permit fee once a year. So those might have been annual or semi-annual inspection.
So the third establishment inspected the tax, and then tax court, complaints more?
Correct.
And then, no comment?
It doesn't affect the public school?
No, but...
This is just commercial establishments?
Correct. Public schools who provide their own food service do not pay a permit fee, although they are inspected regularly. School districts that contract with commercial entities, the commercial entity pays a permit fee, so.
And then like the concession stand, don't because they're part of a non-profit?
Non-profit organizations do not pay a permit fee, although again, they are inspected. And when there's public festivals that involve serving food, those are all inspected during the festival. But again, if they're operated by a nonprofit agency, then they don't pay a permit fee.
Are we increasing the fees because the legislative session allowed?
Correct. And when we increased fees in 1998 to 99, the statute only allowed us to go up to $150 maximum. And at that time, that fee did not cover the cost, or didn't even approach to cover the cost. But it was the highest that we could request. Then in 2001, the legislature did change the statute and allow us to charge up to $300. And since we already were operating at a serious deficit at that time, that was what instigated the push to increase the fee. But we did want to mitigate the effects on the business owners, and that's why we're proposing a step increase, going up kind of halfway the first year and then the rest of the way the second year.
And currently the, I'm sorry, currently the city is paying $300 a year too, but...
Right, right. And that's to help defray costs of other environmental services, assistance with environmental complaints, and other things. Other activities, yeah.
The anal control?
That's a little throwaway here, we won't go into it. We don't want to go into it.
So this would be to the business owners?
Right, this is to the business owners, no, it would not affect what the city pays. And I do have, I didn't, sorry, I didn't intend to include that with the package that I sent y'all, but I do have handouts on what the state's fee schedule is, if you'd like to see that. The state, because they can get information from the controller's office, they have access to the financial records of the establishment, and so their fee schedule is based on gross sales. And I think, and I've broken it down into a per-day revenue, because when you look at it as an annual amount, I can't put that into perspective since I'm not in the restaurant business. So I broke it down into establishments that are open seven days a week, five days a week, or three days a week, because we have some in the county that are just operating on the weekend. And as you'll notice, and this is gross food sales, and so the amount for the $100 permit fee are very, very, very low. When you think, you know, this is based on if it costs $3 for a hamburger, that's $3. It's not the profit on the hamburger that's being, that the permit fee is based on. It's the total revenue from that hamburger. So most of the establishments that we would have at a lower permit fee would, TVH would be charging them $200 a year. And then the larger ones, they would be paying $3.25 a year. So just to put it in perspective, that, you know, our fees, we actually think are a little lower for most of the restaurant owners than the state, particularly the ones who are smaller operations. Our fees are lower than what the state would be charging them.
Are most restaurant owners aware that this has been proposed, or have they rejected any objections?
Yes.
Sir, are you needing from us tonight to accept this proposal?
Yes.
Or rejecting? Need ready discussion? All four? All four, none again? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next time of business, appoint, reappointment to now community facilities development corporation, directors, three positions. The positions that are up are Mark England, Mary Allison, and Ellen Wheeler. And these are all eligible for reassignment.
Turn on here, I might flush my breath.
Anybody talk?
I, just in passing, not any official, but I saw two of them. It was weekly, said something to them. They're always pulling my chain anyway, so.
Well, we have a motion to...
A little change, you're gonna have to take the heat off of it. Thomas will say, I guess I'll take the heat.
Any further discussion?
Tell them how it's going better.
There you go. All four? Four, four, none again? Consider appointment to park and rec advisory board expires January 2004. That is filling, Scott, yours, a lot, can see it now. Have we had a chance to talk to anybody?
No, no, I've thought about it, and I talked to one person, but I haven't had a chance to talk to Mark England, he's on the committee.
On Parks and Rec?
No.
Is this the Parks and Rec?
Oh, oh.
That was in the executive, not Parks and Rec.
No, I'm not talking to him.
I recommend that we table this until the next meeting. Any further discussion? All four? Four, four, none again? Table this until next meeting. Okay, consider sale of office furniture in Tombeen Police Department. After reviewing with the attorney, and it's included in the packet, that one item is donated to the city, becomes property of the city, and there are constitutional provisions against giving away public property. So the furniture that was coming out of the police department, that's going to Tombeen, if we can work with them on getting a fair market value.
It actually said that if it's donated or if it's something purchased by the city.
Well, the attorney part came about, he did not stress either or, he cannot give away anything.
Right.
And I don't think it matters how we...
They're determined for fair market value. From what I understand, this probably doesn't have a lot of market value.
Let's put it this way, it gets pretty bad over there, and this would be like...
It can be on the low end of market value, but it does have to show value. It can be, if we were, felt it's second, you know, somebody's paying for it.
Be like garage sale, some pricing.
My only question to that, though, is if we can't, if we as a city can't give away, how can we accept it?
We can accept donations.
You're accepting donations.
But then it becomes property of the...
We can't donate, but...
We can donate.
Well, I propose we sell it for a dollar a piece, dollar for whatever's owed it. I think they...
Okay, okay.
Well, I think they need to help, whatever we can do to help them.
I was just trying to help out with the topic, please.
What we can do is take it down to the city dump and dump it, and let the dumping go. Get rid of it.
How much stuff is over there, Roy?
Oh, there's a couple old desks. We cannibalized two desks, because we're gonna make a decent desk, give us another desk down there. What they'll be interested in is, there's a lockable file cabinet that has some good deadbolt locks on it for narcotics that they could use. And also, there's some kind of supply cabinet over there that, it's kind of like a locker, stackable, two lockers, little narrow ones, they can use that. And I think that's probably all they're really interested in, just the two items.
I think of us, we don't, sell it to them for dollars.
I'll get with us then. Get his dollar.
Make sure you write him a receipt.
Yeah, I'll give him a receipt for the dollar.
Any further discussion? All four? Four, four, none again? Consider copier, how police department, Roy.
I think we had already kind of talked about this, when we were talking about the building down there, and I think people were having the impression we had a copy across the hallway, which we don't. Basically, our problem is this, we're eating up little old smaller Hewlett Packard printers that are going out of style. We might as well just buy them by the truckloads, because that's how we're making our copies. And Francis, we busted two drug labs in the last two days. We've got 10 people in jail, and we're probably about 30 cases. Those cases are probably gonna be anywhere from 20, probably 15 to 25 pages long. And then they're gonna have to be multiple copies, because you've got file copies, DEA's copies, copies go to the DEA, because they're planning on filing organized crime charges on these people. And that's the problem we're running into. We're, John was down here the other day on an auto theft situation, we arrested three out of Richardson. We're gonna have about, we had like 10 cases to file on those. And that right there was like 500 sheets of paper on 10 cases. And I looked, I talked with the attorney of the ICA office solution, which is the ones where we have our copier in here for the city, that they bought it. And we've been getting refurbished, color printer, color copier in there, which is basically almost identical to this thing here. And it will be refurbished, they give us a 100% warranty guarantee on it, 60-month lease on it. If anything goes wrong with it, it, you know, stops working or it won't function the way that we need for it to function, they jerk it out, put another one in, and we go forward from there. Under state contract, we talked about the state contract on this thing. And for 60 months, with about, we started out looking at 2,000 black and white copies and 100 color copies a month, because all our reports now are printed color pictures. We're the only police department in this county that has colored pictures of capability for all our evidence photos and our, all our evidence photos that we use for the filing case of the DEA's office. And we want to enhance that capability and get them where we can file in color, which will enhance our cases. It's $195 a month on the lease for 60 months. And we just got to sit down and pick out some arbitrary figures. I'm looking at that, probably the black and white part will probably go up a little bit, because we're making more and more black and white copies. Now, the 100 color copies may go up a small amount, but I don't think it's gonna go up much. What we're gonna have to do is, once we get it in place and get it up and running, we'll kind of reach a happy medium, and that will give us an idea of exactly, pretty much in line, what the lease is gonna be. But based on 2,000 black and white and 100 colors, it's $195 a month. So I'm gonna say probably between $195 and maybe $2.25 or $2.30, once we kind of reach a medium there, to see how we're going with this thing.
That would be 60 months.
Yes, sir, 60 months on that. And that is refurbished, and it's a Ricoh 3006. And that is network capable, to be hooked into our computer system, where we'll use that as a network printer for all printers in our office, plus a printer to do our reports on. The print, the network fee is $345, and they come in and they do the whole thing. We've already got the wiring in the walls, we put it in our cell, it's all done. They come in, they do all the connectors, all the plates, get it up and running. And we don't have to touch anything until, once they turn them, they get ready, it's working, it's functioning. And then we get total guaranteed work on it, that's all your, just like what Dan and them have for theirs, which is all their printer, printer stuff, ink, anything that needs to be worked on. We don't pay a penny on it, it's all covered by the lease, and that's the leases, whatever it is, either $195, or it could be whatever, $2.30, or whatever, and that can go somewhere. And my proposal is this, that we'd be allowed to get this, and I can convert it over into my budget come next year. And we're just absorb it into my budget for next year, if I can get the city to put the bill for it from now till then. We really do need this, we're working off a Hewlett Packard printer.
Who does all the copying right now? Like you say, you've got to file all these copies with the DEA.
You look at him standing here.
Man, you're an all the high-priced copyer.
Well...
You know, clerk. I don't know why we can't do that up here.
Well, the problem is...
I mean, those kinds of things, I understand, they have to have copies down here.
It's kind of like dragging the city court from down there to down here. Once we start printing down yonder, well then, we're making 25 to 30 cases on a Hewlett Packard printer, and then we're bundling them all up and bringing them down here, and then making more copies of the cases. So you're still in the same boat. See, we're wearing out copiers down there, or printers down there, one every couple months. So, I mean, that's the problem.
You were saying some of these things are 500 pages long.
For fact, this deal that we got right now, we're working on right now, the two drug cases, I can see it being, I can see it being well over 500 pages of copying, real fast.
Per distribution, or...
No, probably by the time we file 30 cases, and then you, or 20, let's say we file 25 cases. Now, that's the package of cases on different charges. Once we do that, then we have to make copies of that. Copies have to go to the DEA's office, copies go in our file. And then a lot of times, if you're, if an outside agency like the DEA or the FBI is getting involved in it, which I'm sure they probably will on organized crime, then you're making copies for them. There's no telling how long it'll take me to make all these copies on a Hewlett Packard printer.
Sir, are y'all not utilizing the copier up here at all anymore?
Well, we're trying to as much as we can, but now that we're down there, it's even worse, because we're still doing the 25 copies, which could be as much as, you know, 400, 500 sheets of paper. So there, those printers aren't made, those kind of printers don't make that. They're made for something like at home, or very, very light use. We're putting them through some severe heavy-duty use, so in turn, we're wearing them out every couple months, so.
How big an inconvenience would it be if you ran your colored copies up there? You know, I know you can get a real nice black and white printer with 3,000 to 4,000 copies per month for about $146, or at least that's what we're paying. It doesn't have color capability, but that's a C dog.
Well, we can do that. The only thing is, we have the capability for all our reports to have colored pictures. And if we've got that capability for the DEA's office, it just makes our cases that much better. And that's, I mean, I, you know, we can live with a black and white, you know, if we need to, but I'm just saying that for the $195, we can get a refurbished, refurbished, the black and white color copier.
See, you're talking about $2,400 a year, to the budget.
Roughly about, yeah.
About $14,000 or...
If you bought a brand spanking new, if you bought a brand spanking new black and white color copier, you're looking at about $18,000. If you're looking at a brand-new black and white one, you're looking at about $8,000 to $9,000, I think, is what you're saying. Then, under state contract, we can get a refurbished one even lower, get it down to $195 on the lease on it. So within that range, once we kind of reach a normal operating range of copies, so.
I'm not above making copies or scrubbing the floor, but it just seems to me to utilize your time to making copies.
Well, the deal is, I file the cases, I review all the cases, make sure the case is done right. That's why we don't get cases kicked back from the DEA.
I understand that, Roy.
And that's the reason why I do that, you know.
But I think what he's saying, Roy, is, you know, once you review the case, can't you turn it over to, you know, one of the nighttime officers, or Barbara, you know, somebody to make the copies for you, have them waiting for you?
No, we can do that, but I can't guarantee the accuracy of the cases. And what I mean by that is, there's stuff that goes in those cases that need to be there. They have to be there on the case to turn out in court. There's statements.
I don't think that, because there are, it is some information in cases, it's not a matter of public record that that needs to be sitting up here for other people to read. I think it needs to be restricted to police personnel, because there's very little information on the report that's available for public record. Anything else, anybody else have...
Now, see, we have a lot of juvenile cases too, and that's what I want to know. That's definitely noted for anybody. Really, I really, our officers do their, they do their reports, and then we get the cases prepared, and then I review them, if there's something wrong with them, then I turn them back, make sure that that stuff gets done. Whatever, you know, this needs to be gotten, or whatever. And then once they come back to me, then I make them file copies, and then I'm the eye care in the DEA's office, make sure they get filed. And the reason why they do that is because they want whoever's head of the department, and they want that same person all the time. They won't want two or three different people, because when they make these complaints, they make the complaints based on the person that files the case. And what they usually do is make it on the chief, or whoever. Now, Sherman's a little different, they have, you know, they've got the manpower, they have certain individual people that are designated to take cases to the DEA's office when they will need to. And they have complaints with their names already printed on them. And when I go up there and they hand me a packet at the DEA's office, they say, well, we get cases ready to file, then I go up there and I'm the only one that does it, because my name's on all of them. If John or another officer went up there, then they gotta change the whole packet, they gotta redo the whole case again, because that person has to sign for that complaint. And that's what goes, that's what goes to either grand jury, or goes for a warrant, or whatever we do. And that's the reason why I just restrict it, that I take care of it, nobody else. And that way, we don't have to confuse the DEA's office about who's doing it, putting them over. We go down there and if somebody else's name on it, well then, we gotta tell them, they gotta clearly case apart, do all the complaints again, and then that person has to go down there or something. And that's the reason why that's down the line.
Is the copier that we have here being used to a people capacity? Would be, I mean, because you used to come across the street and make them before, correct?
Well, most of the time we made them over there when we had most of our light stuff. But we're getting, we're getting so much volume now that, I mean, yeah, we, you know, if that's what you want us to do, then we'll go do it. But I'll tell you right now, that we're tearing printers up down there, and we're still gonna continue to tear printers up, because those things that I made for the hot printer, yeah.
When you were describing, I didn't fully understand, you know, the volume of the stuff that you're talking about. When we talked about, hey, moving down there, I said, hey, if you need a copier, you ought to get a copier down there. And I was thinking of a desk copier or something like that, that, you know, when Barbara needed something, or somebody came in to paint a fine, you know, whatever. Where you just make one copy or something, you don't need all the Cadillac or the big copier that we got in, like, a year.
Well, if we're gonna get one, we need to get one that we can network on our system. And that way, we can print straight from our computer, which has all our recording program in it, straight into a copper, into a copper, you know, which is a copper printer, print. So you need to be able to have document fee, because you're making multiple cases. So you stick them there, and you're making multiple cases, you're done with them. Otherwise, you're feeding one sheet of paper at a time, like we're doing right now, and you're still doing the same thing. Like I say, a black and white, you know, a black and white would work, it's just that we wouldn't have the capability to use all the color, the color copies, everything we do, all our pictures are done in digital.
Could you get a better feel for, you know, like you had down here, you've got 100, this first page here, what was $195? You had about 100 colored images a month. You're saying that's gonna go up?
It may go up, it may go down. It depends on how many, well, realistically, you know, a traffic accident, something, you're probably not gonna, you're probably not gonna print those out, so. A burglary, or, you know, criminal assault, or... A burglary or, you know, a criminal assault or any of these kinds of stuff where you're taking colored, digital photos, yeah, you're gonna want those, you're gonna want the best photos you can get from the DEA's office across the street.
That, that helps, that helps, that helps across the street, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, we used to not even have, we used to not even supply any pictures to the DEA's office. And now that we're supplying them with color, or with black and white digital pictures, that's all we can print because we have a little old Hewlett Packard laser printer that I can't afford, no two thousand dollar laser printer to cut, you know, new copies. So that's why we don't even think about even trying to get one of those, because we wear it out in two, three months, and it'd be gone. We'd have to end up with those two thousand dollars for another one. So, so a black and white would work, I mean, I mean, I have no problem with that.
Well, that, that, that changes, that changes, that doesn't change that much.
Well, not really, when you look at a refurb at a hundred and ninety-five dollars a month, or roughly about a hundred and ninety-five a month.
You're talking about a quarter, a quarter a picture or a co, a copy?
Yeah, it's, uh-
Twenty, two cents, twenty-three cents.
Yeah, for, for black and white, it's at point oh three one five per image, and for color, it's point twenty-two. That's where, that's where it hurts you, is the point twenty-two, and you get twenty-two cents a copy on the color. That's why you, that's why we would pull down, I mean, the colors we print. Even as it is right now, I, when my guys print their reports out, I have enough to print the digital pictures until I get them, make sure the case is ready, then I print out the digital picture along with the last case, and that's what goes to the DEA's office. And I would do the same thing on the colors, is that way, that way we keep the, it would keep the cost down on the colors, so. But like I say, a black and white would work, it's just the fact that we've, we've got so much volume up set up. And, uh, I mean, I think, uh, Mr. Ross there says himself, you know, he was surprised that we didn't have a copier in our office. You know, and also, and I think, also, I think he said something to affect it, uh, he hasn't seen us in our office, doesn't have a copier. So, and that's basically what we're doing, we're a stall, isn't it?
I feel the same way, James did, I was thinking a smaller copier.
Well, I did, I did look at, I did look at, uh, a copier, a brand-new copier from, uh, Office Depot. It's not networkable, it doesn't sort, it's just a fancy black and white copier, and it's four thousand dollars.
You can't, you, uh, basically, you wouldn't want to think networking, you just wanna be able to print reports off to each officer's-
Yeah, right, well, right off of our computer, that, that way, that way it saves us printer. We network it with our main, main computer. Then, when we print our reports, we just print them right straight to the copier and the copier prints it.
So these, when the officer comes in and writes their report, they print it off and leave it on your desk?
Well, just depends on the, depends on the report. Yeah, depends, depends on the report.
And then you go through it and fix it if it needs to be fixed, and then, uh, assign the case number, and then it hits back to-
Right on, they, they start to get case number on it. Once they put it in the computer, it's got a case number on it. Depends something like a burglary or theft or-
The way I'm trying to get at, Roy, is, okay, is, is John goes out and takes this report from last night, he does this report and prints it out and leaves it on your desk. And then you make changes, you send it back to John, he prints it again, and then, and puts it back on your desk. Is there not a way that y'all are networked now to where it can be, he can save it on a disk and you can just put it in and pop it up?
We're not, we're, we're not like that yet. We don't have the-
He can't save it to a disk on his computer and you pull it up and then-
Well, no, because, because we only have one program in one computer, and that's the one we paid eight or nine hundred, a thousand dollars for three years ago.
So there's no way to, you know, way-
To get a user license, to get a user license to network everything in my office, it's gonna cost me another seventeen hundred dollars for a user license. I can't do that. I don't have the money for it.
So are the computers networked right now?
No, no. I don't have the money for it, I didn't have the money for it. You know, we, we put all the, we, we've got all the cables in the walls. We scrimped and got some people to donate Cat Five cable for us, and when we did all the work down there, we put those, we put those cables in ourselves, we pull them there, pull them there ourselves. So they're all cable, everything's cable, it's just, like, we don't have the money to-
So each officer has his report writer, or is it just on one computer?
No, it's only, we only have one computer that has our Crime Star program, which is our report program.
So that's only licensed for one computer?
Only licensed for one computer.
Maybe later you're not putting it on two because that would be a violation.
Not doing that.
Very good, I like that.
And then expect I would, we do.
No.
Okay.
This case, once it's done, it's saved on that computer? And then you go, you go to your next case, or then it's saved?
What we, what we do with the cases is this, we've got a case we're gonna file. Once we get to a point where we're ready to file a case-
What I'm trying, I, I know what goes on with all, what I'm trying to get at is the copies that are generated from your printer, the twenty-five sets that are generated from your printer. If that one report is five pages, are you printing all twenty-five sets on your printer? Instead of bringing, instead of bringing up here in City Hall to make the twenty-five copies?
We'll make, we make first, the first initial set of them, you know, we have, we have to do that there.
Right, you're doing that there. And then, the twenty-five additional copies, where are they being made?
Well, depending on where we can get them made at, I mean, if, on this deal we're working on now, we'll probably end up coming up here and do it. We'll be up here four or five hours doing it, I'm sure. It's just, you know-
Versus how long does it take when your printer down there?
Let me, let me, let me, uh, try to, I like, I like to table the copier thing for a minute and just, just say, well, look, why don't we, why, out of the, out of the budget, you ought to be able to find seventeen hundred dollars to network?
All right, let me, let me tell you what it's gonna cost us to network on, seventeen hundred dollars.
Before we get into that, that needs to be another agenda.
Okay.
So if you want on the table, copier discussion, and that's fine, or get the copier, you know, whatever, I mean, but if you want something else, it has to be another agenda.
We, we can make a black and white work, it's just for the price for a refurb, which, I mean, we can get a black and white for the same price as a, probably pretty close to the case, so just a straight black and white one. And we do have the capability of all our, of all our pictures being colored pictures, all their, they're all digital anyway.
Chief, if you don't mind, I'd like to table the copying thing right now, and put the other thing on the agenda. And let's take it incremental steps here. Let's get you up to the twenty-four cents you're at.
I'm trying.
Okay, you're all right, and that's great.
And they can do the copy though already, start with the copier and then go, go to the-
Well, I, well, the reason, the reason why I brought the copy part of it up is, is this. The way our main computer is set up now, we, we currently have it networked one computer, one extra computer, which is a laptop. And the way Crime Star works their, works their original license, they allow us to have a laptop with the same program in it. That's, that's a, that's a perk they give you, and they allow you to do that. So we have a laptop that's networked with our main computer, so we can use it in a car or whatever we wanna do, it's got everything, it's in our main computer. Set it down in a car, you check warrants, you can, anybody we've ever talked with or handled, or any report we've ever done is in that laptop. We, 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 for fact, we do a lot of our reports in the laptop, and then we take, we download it into our mainframe at the end of the day. That can be a first or a fourth or a fifth. But we, we have that capability right now, so we're already networked with one, with one laptop. So my, my thinking on it was, since we wear out printers, man, I was wanting to get a copier and go ahead and get that networked into that system. So then, like he said, that gets us printer-wise, after-wise. And then later on down the line, we were looking at trying to get a, uh, a brand new T-Cog to, uh, network all the computers that we do have in our office, mine, John's, and I think we'll have another one for a long, because we gotta replace one of ours. Uh, that way you can do, for it's right at your desk or wherever, you can have several people working at the same time doing it, of course, you know, the need to be. But actually, the big thing right now to me is, is getting a copier online that can be used as a network printer. And once you do that, then everything out, after, everything after that, it just gets the system up and running at much faster. But getting it started is, that's the basics, getting some kind of printer, some kind of copier to work off of, and get it networked into what we've got now.
But the network has got to come, got to come first before we think, before we do the printer.
Well, we've actually already got a network started. We've got a main computer and a laptop, and it's networked through a hub. But nothing else in, in our office is armed, and, and that's, we've already started. So all we do now is we're slowly adding stuff to it.
The next step is a networked copier?
Yeah, printer copier, that we can use for copying made cases. I talked to, I talked to the, the copy guy that handles smart stuff in the city, and this is who I've been talking to. And I told him about this one I found for four thousand dollars, this one I'm tearing out, it's a fine black and white copier, can't network it. It has another capability, you can't even upgrade it to do it. He said, if you're gonna probably end up with a copier printer that you can use in that way, black and white, you're gonna have to move up to a full-size, just for a full-size standard copier. For a fact, the cop, if we, if we ask him to find us a black and white, he said, I can find you black and whites like this one here all day long. Just like this, identical. And his, his, he said, now, you can, you can go to the refurbs, which are really a good deal, because you'll get them, that for a city to buy one like this, and they'll keep it for a couple of years, and then they wanna upgrade to maybe a color or, or one that has a better capacity or something. They pull them and they refurb them, and they give you a brand new T-on. So you're getting a brand new copy of what you're getting.